Hey, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the, um, to the Special Call Council meeting for the City of Nelson, September the 8th, 2022. I might take a minute and say a word prayer before we get started. Father God, we just thank you for today, Lord. We ask that you be with each one here today, Lord, and help us to make the best decisions for the city. We just ask that you be with our employees, with our firefighters, and our deputies who are on the front lines every day, Father God. We thank you for this opportunity, and we ask that you be with us in Jesus' name, amen. Hallelujah.
I pray to the angels, the Lord, of the United States of America, and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with due diligence, justice, and fraud.
I don't, we don't have to show us yours. Um, can I get a, can I get a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
I'd like to approve it.
Okay, can I get a second? David, all in favor? You down, let's thank you. Um, next up is public appearance. Um, before we get started, um, does anybody have anything tonight that relates to our, our meeting? Okay, I'll take that as a no, move on. Um, can I get a, a, a motion to approve the minutes for August the 15th, 2022 evening?
Make the motion approve.
Nathan, can I get a second?
I'll say it.
James, was that David?
David.
All in favor? You down, let's thank you. All right, department reports. We don't have a police report here for tonight for, um, Officer Downey. So we'll move on to, uh, mail reports. I did have a conversation today with, um, with Lori, so we've got a little bit more updated on a list. We've got two items on the punch list, and we will, we will complete the project. So we're gonna do a walkthrough early next week, and, um, and then she'll show up at the October meeting and go over it with everybody. The irrigation system is in, and, um, we're gonna get the maintenance folks, um, so training on it to show them how, how it works and how it's done. And that should be sometime this, this week, or maybe probably tomorrow's Friday, so it'll be the first of next week. What is the suns were heightened instability? John.
Okay, so it's just the signs that are on the.
Yeah, because it wasn't one, that wasn't on the list today. So, okay.
Has Barry come out and walked through the pipes and everything?
He was here last week. I saw him down in the coal side.
He was.
I didn't see him, but, or talk to him, but I saw him come down walking around.
Um, Lori provided him with some information, and he's done some stuff. He's gonna be getting back with me. We're supposed to meet next week, um, midday to, um, look at the next phase and to go over that stuff. And if you guys want, I can have him, I can have him come to the October meeting and, and go over that as well. Would you like that?
Yeah, if he could do a walkthrough and check the pipe and, uh, the boxes and everything.
Yeah, he did that. This is the second time he checked those own boxes, so, so there at October meeting. Please. There's some pictures in here of the irrigation system. I know that we've gotta get our maintenance guys to add some sand. Um, there's a, to the, to the sod that's already there, so the grass will grow in. We still have time for it to, um, to grow some, so that's one of the things on here. Then it looks like they put a nice rock bed, a rock picture of a nice, the rocks they dug out while they were putting it in for us, so it's the Nelson Rock Collection. That's all I have for this evening. Does anybody have anything for me? Uh, I did talk with the, um, I did talk with, uh, the Kerry with the, um, the swing set stuff over here. After digging, talking to Miranda for Oni Call and GMA, um, we need three quotes for the playground equipment. I did call, we should have those this week. I don't know if they've sent it back. I was in the meetings in Atlanta all day, so, um, I called the two people on Michael Kidd's report again and, and just get, send them a picture. I didn't send them the quote or anything like that, but a picture. Uh, one of the guys called me back, one of the two companies called me back and said, "Hey, um, can you tell me, um, which playground company makes this?" And I told him that. And he said, "The company that they, the playground equipment that they use is manufactured in the same warehouse. It's very similar." So he, it would be apples to apples. So he's gonna get that. We'll have that for our October meeting, and then you guys will, you'll vote on that, and then we'll order the equipment. And then, the equipment, I don't know, if it according to GMA, I called them. So the equipment, you order the equipment based on the quotes that you get, and then the labor and installation goes out for it. That's what they told me. Is that wrong? Okay, okay. That can't straight, that can't straight from the DMAT, so.
It's gonna be, the installation's gonna be part of the deal, isn't it?
Can't do it that way. Um, you can, you can bid on, you can order it. Here, here is the thing with it. I can't just say that I'm gonna order, because it's coming from Splotage, I can't just say, "Yeah, we're getting a really good deal," and I can order it because it's $35,000. You have to have three quotes. It's just like if you order a new lawn tractor, or you order a new bogcat, you gotta have quotes, three quotes, and then you can, they have to be comparable, and then you can actually choose whichever one you want, but we gotta have the quotes. So you can still go with whichever one the council wants to go with. The other thing is, is her, um, her equipment is no longer on sale. It was only on sale for one month, so, um.
I thought we were waiting on it to go on sale. I asked you about it last week.
Yeah, we did, we did, but there wasn't, there was, the way that I thought that it would work is we could put it out for bid and do it that way, but we could not. So you have to, when you, whenever you bid, you have to be able to say, "This much is for," unless you do a quote, the three quotes for the equipment, like the playground sets, you do a quote for those. You say, "I need, um, uh, this type of playground set, these dimensions, and I need the, the arch swing with three sections, two tables, and whatever." And then they'll come back and say, "Here's a quote from my company for this equipment." And then you get three quotes on the equipment. Then the bid packet goes out. Otherwise, th- this is what happens if you do, if you just say, "I don't wanna do anything, I'm just gonna bid this out." You would have people come back to you and say, "We wanna do, we wanna, here's your, here's what we, we want from you guys." What happened with this is, is you got to look at what Kerry had, and you kind of, she put something together, and you got to agree to what you wanted on there. "Yeah, we want these swings. Yes, we want it to be arch. Yes, we want, we want the playground set to be, uh, for five to 10 years old," right? So if you just bid it, you just get what they give you. Does that make sense? But you have, you have to, but you still have to have a quote. You still have to have the three quotes in order to, to be able to pick.
I just know, only most of them's in the business of installing. Like, do you, obviously, how you could just buy the equipment, and then get somebody else to install it?
You can. I mean, you, oh, you can, but you don't have to. They can give you a quote for all of it. As soon as you let them know, like I did with those two companies, "Here's what we're looking at, um, here's the piece of equipment we're looking at," or "The playground sets we're looking at, we need you, we need, we need a quote for something comparable." Then you can put a bid packet together, and you could bid it all at the same time. But you would have an idea of how much that, that would cost. Example, her playground equipment's $35,000, um, the installation was $17,000, and, um, and then there were some other things that brought it up to $70-something thousand dollars. Somebody else may have a playground equipment, same type equipment, same dimensions, same height, same age group, and they may say, "Ours is $45,000," or "Ours is $75,000." So when you, you, you'll pick a range in there, and you will say, "Hey, when you put it in your bid packet, this is what we're looking for, this ti, this piece of equipment," you know?
Yeah.
"And we wanna turnkey bid." You could do it that way and bid it all. But you gotta have a starting point.
We gotta pick a piece of equipment, and everybody's gotta bid the exact same piece of equipment together.
No, not necessarily. What I did, what, what you do is, is you, there's the equip, the playground sets come, there's different playground sets, you would, just like the one we have down here, the one we have up here, the one you've got, the two we looked at in Jasper. Those playground sets, they vary, and, but they are for a certain age group. They fit a certain dimension, and then yours got the six-foot height on them. So that piece of equipment that we all liked, um, had a plate, it had a number with it. So you can ask for something comparable to that, a quote on it. And that give you a quote for, for a piece of equipment, and they'll send you, "Here's what I have." Like, this one guy did get one back already. He sent me four, four pieces, four playground equipments that, that fit those dimensions, and he was getting prices for them. So the council will have an opportunity to look at all of that, and then we put.
And then when you turn around and put it out for bid, everything's comparable, as opposed to him coming back with a $50,000 piece of equipment, them coming back with a $30,000.
Everybody's, yeah. So you don't have, like, bids, a $100,000, $150,000 bid versus $70,000. You, you know what you're wanting, so to speak. So you're just narrowing it down. Here's what the city is looking for. So that's what we're doing.
Do you have the information on the, the sets that she showed you?
Got hers.
I'd like to look at it and.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll give you that one. Um, and then, um, what I'll do is, the, as soon as we get the emails with the prices, I'll forward those over to both of you, so you'll have those. And then, um, we'll put a, we'll put a tentative bid packet together for the October meeting and take a look at it when we're in here, maybe send it to a couple of you, you and Nathan beforehand, take a look at that, and then if there's something that we need to tweak or change, we can. And then we'll put it out for bid right there in October. Okay.
What are we at with Kidd and his design? Haven't heard anything in a while.
Um, I talked with him, when was it? Was it Tuesday?
It was just the past few days. Cause he emailed a few days ago.
I, I talked with him a couple of days ago, and they're, they are working on a design concept, and I asked them if they could come, they could come out to either our October or November meeting and present. So he's, he does have stuff together, they've just been swamped.
Now, he's separate from the town hall that we're supposed to have?
Yes. Well, he'll, I, I don't know. I mean, he, he just said he would be coming out, um, coming out. I'll get some definite on that. I'll email him, and then I'll. I'll email Michael, and then I'll copy all his response. Okay. Town Hall. Take two. Playground says, now, two. Anything else on that while we're on it? I've got a couple action items like that. I'm about Barry to the October meeting to, um, give us his opinion on, on the finished product here. It'll finish next week, and we'll sign off on it. Um, and also about Phase Two. Um, I'll email Michael Kidd for town hall date, and then I also have, um, the playground email to, to both you and Nathan for the, the quotes that are gonna come back from the two companies. And then Kelsey and I can look on the bid.
And I notice it started on the trail, too.
They did, started on the trail. Do you know if they've been able to do anything? I know it rained so bad that they were.
And I walked down just to the first bridge a few days ago, so they've been clearing stuff out. They've got the new pathway cut to cut off that little pickup car, and he's been bringing in the, the mix today. They moved dump trucks coming in all day.
It was raining the other day, and I notice they started out of the trail yet.
Yeah. I might be stalled with that rain for a pe, for a couple days.
Yeah.
I think it's. I think it's Tuesday, I saw.
Anybody else have anything? All right, Ms. Miranda, turn it over to your four, five, your forty.
All right, so bank account balance is, uh, everybody should have that in their packet. Uh, starting with general fund, $774,351. Splot fours, $334,039. Uh, $334,039. Uh, Splot two, $402,257. Splot five is $756,841. The cash reserve is $167,361. And the new Pickens Splot 2020 is $566,929. And then the grant funds transaction came through, um, that's $252,150. Uh, as far as the budget, we are basically running, um, right on cue. We're only two months in, um, so not much really to report there. Uh, the millage rate is later on in this package for the meeting. Um, so we'll go over that when we get to that.
Can you think about, yeah, um, about, um, the, a schedule for road paging and also for hitchhiking? Well, it's, it's complete. Okay. Um, were, we, did they do anything with the drainage?
I don't know. I don't know, it was a month ago. They got it. They know, we're just on the schedule.
Okay.
And it's not Jeff and David, it's Steve Ross and.
Steve Ross and. If you could just email him and get a real pay.
Is that any of the big charges that's gonna be coming in Splot any time soon?
It'll be the final for the, the check down here, for sure.
We came under budget. How much? Is it $30,000?
Thirty thousand.
That's great. Yep. Um, okay, next up is new business, uh, millage rate for Pickens County side. They're, uh, trying to come up over $3 million.
All right, so, um, we got our consolidation reports. Digestes actually went up, the values, um, $3,250,338. That's significant for the city. And, but, we will be, um, doing a rollback rate, no increase. Uh, you will see an increase on this, just because of the, um, digest values going up. But last year was 1.146, this year's going to be 1.123.
I never did understand that. So the taxes will increase, but we've rolled back?
Yes, because the values increased.
I don't like that. I know my house ain't increased that much, though.
It's more than new houses, and when you sell it, any transactions that happen, as far as real estate. Uh, but that's a significant number, just so you guys know.
Which one?
The increase of the digest, at 3 million.
How come the Pickens side is substantially higher than Cherokee, on our millage rate?
Um, I'm not real sure why that is. Um, it's just.
It's the valuation or the area.
Yeah, and then I think Cherokee County also, there's different, different exemptions and stuff that also kind of, like, so.
I don't know, I mean.
Well, then, the elderly don't get a school tax in Pickens, so that's one thing.
No, that's Cherokee.
Those at Cherokee, they don't have to do Cherokee.
Have retirement, you, you can quit paying school tax in Cherokee, you can in Pickens.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
You can if you, uh, live under election, $25,000 a year.
Yeah. In Pickens?
Yeah.
I always just wondered if anybody could help me understand that, cause I was looking at that earlier. It's like 665 in Cherokee, right?
Let me look.
Cherokee side of Nelson.
It's like .665.
So here's the other thing, the difference between Pickens and Cherokee. Pickens actually does the lost, um, we participate in the lost program. So with that being the case, you have to use those lost proceeds to offset your millage rate.
Yeah.
So that's another difference.
Maybe a significant difference.
Yeah, that's.
Cherokee's one of the few counties that does not.
Don't do loss, yeah.
How much are we getting out of the lost?
That's what we're arguing about right now.
We're currently like 2.8%, which was around, was it 140, 140,000 a year?
Yeah, it's 100 and, we're right at $141,000 a year if it's lost.
And it'll go up to 4% from the 2.8, so.
Yeah, if that, yeah.
If the county side prevails.
That is significant for the general fund.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions, um, any other questions on the taxes, millage rate, roll back?
So how much more funding are we gonna get with this rollback, right, for the city, their Pickens side?
You're talking about the lost ones?
No, I'm talking about.
For the property taxes?
Oh, the property taxes.
Uh, it's, it's $3,356.
Overall?
That ain't too bad. It's bad, but.
Well, and, and all really is just the people that, that have bought property or, um, have had their houses reevaluated, um, you know, that kind of, like, any new builds, new builds come into play, property values go up.
All these houses that's been built, they went around and reevaluated, all the houses, and they got, and they're bad right now.
Well, they, I think they reevaluate every house every so many years, so it's not, not the ones like if they pull, well, they pull permits or something, we have to send that back.
It has to be years, though.
Have you, have you refinanced or anything?
Every so often they're supposed to go in and reevaluate, I don't know, every 10 years, every five years.
But, yes.
That's the interesting thing.
Yeah. So we need a motion to approve the millage rate for Pickens County side?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve the, um, millage rate for Pickens, for Pickens County?
I might have noted.
Okay, James, second?
How much more could we lower this?
You really, so how you come to this number is, there is a actual computation of the millage rate, um, form that you have to fill out. So then you put in all the numbers based off of your consolidation reports, um, and that's your real, your real property, your personal property, your motor vehicles, mobile home, um, less your exemptions. And so we follow what the county's exemptions are. So when you factor all that in and you put into this, it's a state-created, um, form. When you factor it all in and you put in last year's millage rate, um, it automatically tells you what your rollback rate should be to offset it.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah.
It's a tool that.
It's a tool that the Georgia Department of Revenue provides to you, and then you have to submit that back to them when you submit your digest information.
And that makes it revenue neutral, doesn't it? The idea, even if the values went up.
Right, it's, it's keeping it neutral, even though, so.
You're dropping.
If you, as a homeowner inside the city, and you have a piece of property and somebody comes in and builds a house, obviously, that revenue is gonna increase because you built another house that wasn't originally there before. So that doesn't affect the other, the neighbor, but it, it adds to the value, and that's how the increase is coming. It's not gonna, it, the rollback keeps everybody's everyday taxes from going up. It might flinch away at 20 bucks, 50 bucks, but that's it.
So are you saying that people that built homes in here, or, um, re, refurbished homes in here, whatever they did to refix them, those homes, the taxes would go up, but it would not affect other people's homes just that much?
That's correct. And that is exactly why you have the reassessment of real property and the inflationary rate, whenever you factor that in, that offsets it for the people that are already here. It doesn't.
I just wanted to make sure I understood what you're saying there.
I can answer.
Well, one of the assessors personally told me, when you have a house sale next to this person, they're gonna come back and look and reevaluate your property, so.
It's usually certain special conditions that they do come back and evaluate your property. It's not across the board.
They've done a bunch in Nelson this year. I mean, come on Pickens side, I don't know about Cherokee, but.
Yeah, you know, every time a permit's pulled, we have to send copies of permits to the county. So then they kind of assess the value of those properties for any.
A lot of times, any addition.
So like, you had, like, the, the building over at your place, you don't come and assess that to tax it, so it.
Appraisals, if you're refining it, um, selling, buying, any of those transactions creates a, an effect, basically.
Yeah. And everything's coming this way.
It's like everything you make it up here.
So the number that, that you get from that software, we're not allowed to go any lower than that, is that what you're saying?
I mean, you could, but I don't know what the.
You can lower taxes, but you'd lower your revenue.
Yeah, you would ro, you would lower your revenue, and it's also due tomorrow.
And that's the, that's before we, before we have another meeting.
I just got to look at this last night. I'd just like, I mean, I guess we can get, we can go ahead and vote on this or whatever, but I'd like to understand how it's almost doubled what the Cherokee side is on the, on the city tax, the millage rate.
Is it general?
I think it's always been like that. It's always been a big discrepancy between them. The, the, I think the amounts of people are paying are fairly similar. It's not, I don't know how to explain it.
I don't know.
I know, like, when the bills were cutting in, they were very similar, the amounts were being paid. Because the majority of what we collect is actually fire tax. It's like 75%.
Tell me what your question is again, and I'll, I'll give Daniel a call.
The millage rate for the Cherokee side of Nelson is .665, and the Pickens side is 1.123 if we pass it tomorrow.
I'm gonna go pull up my history in here, cause I really don't know.
And all we've done is rollbacks for years and years. I don't know when the last chance we did.
We've never did.
I'll, I'll send him an email and see if we can get, get forty on it. Um, so can I get a motion to approve the millage rate for Pickens County? Or do you want to go ahead? You can play it if you want.
Okay, so the Cherokee County digest is significantly lower, I mean, significantly higher.
Is significantly higher or lower?
Higher.
Okay. What is it?
Let me pull it.
You're talking about his side of Nelson?
Yes.
Do y'all know, like, the split? How many houses we got?
It's close to even. I can't remember exactly, but it's like 200, 200. Each one's right over 200, I think.
So Cherokee County is, um, overall is like 25,630, or 25,630,000 in real property. So that kind of gives you a different.
Versus.
Versus 16 million.
I'm gonna get this.
How do you do fire tax on the Cherokee side?
Yes, we have a agreement for the entire city, the county. It, it helps lower the interest rates because our highest operating is a much better.
I'd just say, you take the money in for the Cherokee side and send it out.
And send it out. In SMS. Yeah, we do it for the whole set.
Yeah.
It is on the 75% of what we collect is fire tax. It's like 2.92%.
Yeah, so the gross digest for Cherokee County is 25,731,975. So that's gonna end up being the difference. Um, that has a lot to do with it.
So the Cherokee County side runs a higher debt digest and a lower millage, which equalizes basically the amount, you're saying that the Cherokee side's actual taxes, comparable to ours, Pickens side are close.
Yeah. What's the population difference on each side?
I don't know, it was a sentence, it was so screwed up. According to the sentence, we actually had 75,000 in this up here, like, literally.
You'd have to go off the other one, one side, there was 700, on one side, 760-something, there was 640 on, uh, Cherokee, uh, Pickens side. About 1,300.
I just had people asking me, talking about how the counties went up on taxes, and I just didn't have a heart to ask the questions.
Good, I'm good with that, and I'll, I'll give you some answers. Does anybody else have anything? I got the, I got the, the digest.
I can also do.
For Cherokee, yeah.
It's like what comes down to.
Was, uh, 25 million, and Pickens was 16, so.
I think something along with county taxes on the Cherokee side.
Okay. If you think of anything else, um. If you think of anything else, I'm just asking, I'm gonna, I'm gonna reach out to Daniel tomorrow.
We could, we could actually pull two tax bills for counties that have comparable values, one from Cherokee, one from Pickens. And look them side by side. It might be easier to explain it looking at two bills than that way.
Oh, that's one of the biggest parts of it in the, is the fact of the reassessment value. Reassessment is two point six million for Cherokee County. So that's the part that offsets it and creates a rollback.
Two point what?
Two point six, two point six two eight oh eight three.
Anything else?
No.
Anybody having other questions with regards to that? James? Dale? All right, can I get a motion to approve the millage rate for Pickens County? Yep, I need a second.
Second.
You can't second, girl, so. You made the first.
I'll second.
Will you? All in favor? You know, thank you.
Is there anything else that there are in this Pickens?
I have two, BG thirty-two, BG thirty-eight.
All right, maintenance equipment replacement, Kelsey, I know those are-
Well, apparently, well, apparently we have two tractors, which I thought we only had one tractor. The, one of the tractors we have was a twenty-fourteen, purchased new from Nelson Tractor, I believe it was fifty-three thousand. That one is used occasionally. We also have the two thousand one tractor, I believe. There's a little narrative here. The old tractor we have is a, it's a two thousand one, four thousand six hundred and sixty-two hours on it. The last service was February twenty-twenty-one. It has, I think, maybe an hour on it since then. It's basically a giant cinder block taking up space in the maintenance building. There's other attachments and stuff as well, but also taking up space. And there's literally no use for this tractor, it's just sitting. And which also means it's losing value. Because as I said, there's another piece of equipment that they could use, which is a KS oh four oh dash four Mini X. I had them go through and go over the reasons that it wouldn't be beneficial to them. Part of it was also the fact that it could get out on the trail, whereas the heavier equipment that they currently have cannot make it out there. So, there is-
Anybody know the value of this?
No, I can't even know if we had it until today. So it's, the hour meter on there, it's probably a lot of service record. It's also a Capota. But it is- Yeah. I think it's a stone.
No, that's what he said.
Yeah.
He said it won't even crank at this point.
Well, I think the battery may be bad, it probably would if something was done with it. It's not that it, it wouldn't work, it just isn't used. And it had, what was it? It's a Bushog, it finished mower decks, which means it's basically a single-use, per single purpose mower for cutting grass and smaller underbrush when it was used. So.
This one here trims the trees and vegetation away from the roadways, which is similar to a siren, which we do need.
It also has many other patterns that can be purchased, and we have bracers and stuff in there. And it has the option of having a cab put on it. I think it comes with a cab without. The cab is a safety feature. But there's, there's quotes, several different quotes back there with cab, without cab. I think there's another option. There is a brochure in there as well. And another brochure that has all the other attachment options that can be-
You got that in the back?
Yeah, it's in the, on the test center. But either way, whether we do that right now or not, this truck, we don't need one that's sitting there that isn't used. It's kind of like that, the other old truck that sat there that had holes in the floor. It's had weird insurance on it and it's basically just a way to get up space.
The last, the, what do they call it, life cycles?
Life cycle, anyway. Trying to turn it five, six years just to keep it. We're, it also helps us just fast and push lost funds. When stuff comes up, if we're using the money that we're getting.
Let's say the life cycle on all of the equipment being most of this-
Everything used to be-
Turn off, get my channel, you could auction it all.
You can still bid.
But at the same time, it's, the other tractor we have is also twenty-fourteen, so keeping that in mind. We have that one.
Do we need it?
Ask them.
Honestly, we don't need it either.
I think the only beneficial thing to it is the tool we have, the dumpster that is able to go over, but he said that this one-
The Mini X will do the same thing.
Yeah.
It, I mean, we, if we went ahead and purchased the Mini X, it would not only alleviate the stress of having two extra pieces of equipment, maintenance upkeep, fuel to sit there. They're both single-use. And what I mean by the single-use as far as the backhoe, yes, you can dig holes with it, and yes, we have a bucket, but we also have two bobcats running out that'll do the same exact amount of movement of dirt. You also would have the Mini X that would do the same grading. It would completely get rid of the reason to have either of those two pieces of equipment. It would open up more floor space, it would actually open up a lot more things that we could actually do in-house versus having to have outsourced it probably. It's, it would significantly improve our abilities to trim back as far as like on the roadways and everything else. And even like down at the front, like near the sign and stuff, all of that kudzu, all of that kind of stuff where it's, you know, starting to creep out into the road, we can't do that with the old Bushog because number one, it's such a steep grade. You can only lower the Bushog so far on the back. And then you're only backing in and mowing a sixty-inch section versus you pull up with the, the Mini X, you drop it down, you can actually swivel, pull it three hundred and sixty degrees, so you're range. The arm distance, length, and everything else is significantly bigger as far as digging depth, height of reach, you know, to clear what we need to do with it. It's by far a superior piece of equipment that will ultimately do everything those two pieces of equipment will do. And to answer your question, the rev valuation is eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars for the L thirty-seven ten.
I did ask Nelson Tractor valuation wise on the twenty-fourteen out of curiosity. And he wasn't, he hasn't seen it, he was just going, you know. And he said, not looking at, having no idea what shape it's in or anything, he would say roughly twenty to thirty. When I was pulling them up online, they were going significantly more than that, like four years ago. So it could be that it's worth a good bit more than that. So it could be that if we were to get rid of those pieces, it would significantly offset the cost of this. So it's a good thought.
The thirty-seven ten, I just looked it up, average cost is going for eighteen to twenty. So that's only, so between the two, we could-
Maybe I'll just-
Offset the entire cost.
Yeah. What was the cost on the Mini X between?
Sixty-five and seventy-six, or something.
I think it was, what did you got, it was out with a cab on it, it was like fifty-two to sixty-six. That the cab is a safety feature, especially if you're gonna-
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, the Bushog and the cab.
Yeah, exactly. So I think the low end, it was fifty-two, but I would fish for the, just expect it to be like sixty-six.
And that's what the thumb is, the cab.
That's the thumb and the brush mower included.
What size brush mower is it, forty-two inch?
Actually, I don't recall, because I did look at both with the gallon, the flow rate on that one. We were gonna have to step up to like another twenty thousand dollar to get the bigger one. And I don't recall if it was a forty-six and then the smaller was forty-two, or if it was-
Forty-two, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
There's other attachments, there's a brochure in there for other attachments that can be purchased for that.
If we do this, we'll have to have a trailer to move it, because you can just drive it all the way to city.
We need that in order to actually move.
Anything, anyway.
All of our serviceable equipment to get up there, we're paying up the Easter right now to have it picked up and all, back and forth anyway.
We had discussed purchasing one anyway, one of the last meetings, we said we need to be playing in part.
Like fourteen thousand pound trailer for that machine is ten thousand something pounds.
It's a good package. How would you get one?
Does anybody have CDLs to pull it?
You don't have to. It's nine thousand nine hundred pounds, it's under the ten thousand for them.
You gotta have fourteen thousand pound trailer to tow it to. Which depends on which the LT man catches.
Right.
I gotta have CDLs to pull mine, and mine's smaller than that one.
If that one is only gonna stay here, the issue would be getting it serviced too, which if it's Capota and it's going Nelson Tractor, they'll come get our stuff. So.
Well, I mean, you can tow it over there, but we never tow the things that have CDLs.
Yeah.
Do you have any?
I'll go.
We can pay for that. We can think we can get some of those. So we borrow some of it. Give me your most.
What GVW is our truck, do you know?
I don't wanna speak their own numbers. It's a, one zone, it's a thirty-five hundred. I'd have to, you don't have to look.
Well, I just need to find out.
Make sure we get capacity.
If the GVW is over twenty-six thousand for-
Combined, right.
To find, you gotta have CDLs.
Right.
I don't know what weight the truck is, it may not be that heavy as-
I don't think it is, I don't think, I looked at it the other day and I wouldn't say it was like sixty-six hundred pounds. It's, but that was manufactured. I don't know, it's set on the wheels with the piston and everything, like I'm not a hundred percent.
Yeah, we had a dump, yeah, but I'm, last property chance.
Right.
We could call the LT and ask them, see what the GVW is.
Yeah.
Say someday I'll take stock for you with that garbage truck, you'd have to have CDLs, because it's got our brands. It just depends on who's stopped you is what you gotta have.
That's why I'm not gonna move there on that day.
And where you're at. I'll send them to side roads over time, but-
So our actions for, for this maintenance equipment would be get, would get, and to evaluate those tractors and to get a, and to get a price for a fourteen thousand, for a forty thousand pound trailer.
Preferably a TIL trailer.
A TIL?
They're, they're less, they're not near as dangerous. They're more expensive, but they're not-
Country boy build, isn't it?
Yeah, they sell a little bit for places. Which Nelson Tractor money, which we need to get a price from Mason and Nelson probably on the equipment and everything.
Okay.
But I think Nelson's normally a little cheaper than Mason.
I think you were right, so. We can take that.
Yeah, Mason ripped us off on that siren, boy.
Well, we will try to get that for our October meeting and then come back at it.
But on rainy days, that old tractor, if we get it out, clean it up, put that front noise piece back on it, get it-
Oh, I mean, I have no objection to that.
And collect, the radiator needs cleaned real bad, I noticed a few years ago.
And, I mean, to be really honest, with the trash cans and everything in there, since I've arrived here, I've not been able to get really to the tractor to evaluate anything. I know the key will not turn over, you know what I mean, like it is completely dead, which is batteries. But, anything like that, I have no objection to taking care of it.
Yeah. Could we not store the trash cans up here on the concrete pad up here?
We may want to move some of them out.
Because they can't do nothing.
Oh, I know.
That much stuff packed in there.
We've got like a hundred and thirty of them out so far, out of five fifty. Anybody want that one?
Is all of our customers having them there?
No. Then we're waiting on a new tractor to get them.
But it shouldn't hurt, I'm gonna say after her.
We may be able to, yeah, we could do that. Have we got cameras up there yet on that?
Uh-uh.
I have to do it there.
No, that's the quote that's in here from the, where the garden stuff is.
Okay.
They had to put up the one for the dumpsters or nothing with-
We didn't have a quote for that, because we had the quote originally for solar. And it was insanely high. So we were waiting till we had the pole and all that stuff up, so we got the pole up. So we just got the quote to have a camera put back on there. Because all the cameras that were on the building had to be removed for on the insurance stuff. So the last quote we got of it, it saved like thirteen thousand dollars to do solar, which was ludicrous.
But the cameras that we took down, if there were, I mean, could they not reinstall them?
I do not know. Some of them were usable, some of them were not usable. And I said, like, the one that was in here in the lobby had to be replaced because it had a weird triangle thing on it. One of the radios, the one that was up on the hill by the, the little parket there, he had to fix that. We thought it was storm damage, somebody had intentionally damaged any things. There were some things that he could work with and some that he couldn't. And he did say that the radios need to be upgraded at some point, because there's a lag. Because I think when he put them in, they were like two point eight and, or two point seven, and everything's now running on, I guess it's like five gigahertz or something. So we did put a quote in there for that. It's not something that's like asking right now, but at some point it's gonna happen. Just to keep up, because there were, like, the cameras bounce from one to the other before they come back to City Hall. So some of them, it's not like I've seen it. Stops and goes.
I thought we voted to have that cameras installed enough about three or four months ago.
It got installed though because of the, the solar panels and we were taking the, we had to-
So we hadn't made them that-
For them.
We voted just to approve the other stuff and to wait on them, because the cameras, because the quote was so high for solar. It was like outrageous high.
And we were, we needed to take down the place down before we did it.
Did they get the main, I haven't been in the office, all that stuff that went into it, we got it?
Yes, that stuff was put in. He finished it up Friday, I think, Thursday, Friday. They were in off and on all last week. It was in there for three, four days.
It was upgraded to receive or cameras?
Yeah, I think we have. I think we have, I think they've swapped it to thirty-two, if I remember correctly. But I could be misextating that. I think it's thirty-two.
Okay. Any other questions on the maintenance equipment? I've taken action for, to get pricing and to have them come out and evaluate both tractors and maybe get a price on the trailer to bring back in October.
And see if we missed our options, have another option, because I thought we'd be better off than not doing options.
Okay. Okay.
You can reduce possibility on this one.
All right. Next up is old business, MSA Code Enforcement Agreement. This one came, this MSA Code Enforcement Agreement came back up, William, you wanna talk about that one?
Yeah, I asked, we were talking about it, I asked if we could go back and explore it again. Definitely not, I'd say probably not into the depth that these, the examples are, but we're sure we go about building and other stuff. Basically just trying to give us an avenue where if we've exhausted our avenues, for us things that, I forgot our inspectors name.
William Warner. Well, this has come up, there's been a situation that has arisen that we would need this service, which is why this came up.
We were thinking along the lines of, I know, I feel kind of the same way, I don't particularly want the county marshals riding the city, finding their own stuff, but something that we would be able to, be able to use it, like I said, if we've exhausted avenues, we'll leverage the talk to the people, if they finally just make us do it. As a last straw.
So entering to an IGA with, with Cherokee County, that- So entering to an I G A with, with Cherokee County, that we basically say, hey, we have an issue that we can't handle, we still can hold court here, um, and have.
A bit of other things.
Yeah.
Another preference would be that citizens would go to court here as opposed to, and I don't know how Pickens County is with as well, maybe we explore both sides, you may get a better.
Pickens County don't have a marshal, they don't have, they don't have the.
They may have two now, maybe they had one at one point, they may have.
Just one, yeah, that's what I was trying to.
Had a marshal for a while.
Yeah, they don't have enough to cover, they don't have enough to cover, we talked to Chris about what, what, you know, we go to that last one, that was.
Think dividing it would be difficult.
Yeah.
I, I meant, one or the other, take it depending on who, best service, the best price.
Yeah, I don't. Well, the fact that Cherokee ain't been offering to do it for.
They, they offered to do what, and this here, Miras of Waleska, which that's not what we want, we would need it tailored and.
Yes.
Yeah, we basically just want it, if we've exhausted all efforts, then they would do that for us, but court would be here.
Well, whenever I contacted Jeff, when William and I talked about this, he sent back just the original agreement, and he did tell me, he goes, y'all are probably not gonna want all this, you guys go through it, you know, just pick out what you want, which was basically just code enforcement again, and we would have to discuss with them about the, the court stuff, I don't, I don't know about all of that, but it was literally just code enforcement, and again, it's ninety-nine percent of the time we can send a letter, you're gonna, there's times you're gonna make somebody mad, they're gonna call pissed off, whatever, most of the time you can have a conversation with somebody and it's fine, there's a handful of times that is not the case, and there's a specific instance that is ongoing.
Getting to be more and more people out there that you don't need to be dealing with.
Yes.
Quarter doesn't need to be dealing with.
This is a situation I'm not sending quarter to.
Trained and equipped to deal with situations.
Yeah, we have asked the fire marshal to step in to help with some of this, and even that, I don't think is gonna be adequate, so.
We get some earth reaching our kind of Chris, just because they do have a new marshal in, in play now, and, um, he's very.
And again, with it being just a hopefully seldomly used thing.
Well, there's another situation on Ray Mountain Road.
And I think.
That is gonna have to be addressed at some point too.
Our ordinances are more in line with Pickens as far as.
Well, I think Cherokee was gonna go by our ordinances.
Yeah, and I think that as far as them being familiar with it and utilizing our ordinances and upholding those, I think that, I think it's worth talking to Chris, just because they're, since they've got a new marshal, they're kind of redefining how they're doing things up there, so.
I mean, if we'd come out with a X amount of dollars for every time I come out and serve papers or whatever, if one day more of Pickens, more of Cherokee to serve papers, there's more Cherokee and Pickens side, that court are right here.
Yeah.
Cause we're paying a ton of money.
Well, you have to pay them, yeah.
Judge all the time, anyway.
We just pay the courts, does this matter anyways? Like if we want to serve people?
You may.
I mean, what y'all done over here, on this house over here?
Yeah, if you just want service, that's easy enough.
Yeah, well, that's not, we haven't sent somebody out to check it, this is where this is coming in, where it's a situation that we need somebody to go out there, I'm not sending quarter out there, if we do have to send somebody out, the fire marshal in theory could go, but it's really not their job to go, it's not sheriff's department to go, and when we talked to him, the response that we give back was, what about your ordinances, this is what your ordinances are for, you have to have somebody who's gonna force you, your sheriff's departments are for crime, your ordinances, you have to have a way to have what your ordinances, normally I can send a letter, and it's, it can be dealt with, that is the ones that are like, yeah, yeah, I'm not doing that, and I'm getting the phone calls from the neighbors and the issue that we're having over here, it, it's going to have to be addressed, the county has someone involved with it, we have to have a backup plan, and, I mean, I can send somebody fifty letters with fifty warning, fifty of notice, highlight it in yellow, do full print.
I'll give Chris a call tomorrow, I'd call him anyway.
Yeah, like I said, that's one of the big, I don't know, I think, we don't really want their marshal.
It was.
Going out looking for stuff, but they're there when we need them.
Yeah, it would be at the request of the city when every other avenue.
And just pay them a service fee, that'd be okay, so it's on a managed basis.
So what, what I'll do is I'll go with Chris and see if they can do it, and, and then we would need something tailored, Joe, oh, Joe, we would need to come back at it with what we see that, um, I G A looking like.
Pickens has probably not done that before, I presume.
They may be able to just copy this, cause when they did the tax agreement, Daniel had me send them a thing from Cherokee to use as reference.
Yep.
And, and I'll read that aloud, so for this one here, one dot one, it says the county agrees through its, uh, community development agency to perform within the city limits of Nelson, all functions performed by the C D A as necessary in sole direction of the county.
Yes.
So you, that's building construction, so, one dot two, yeah, we didn't want to do that one, uh, the county agrees through its code enforcement services in the county marshal's office to perform within the city limits of Nelson, all functions performed by the marshal's office as necessary in sole discretion of the county, so we would need that.
Change to discretion of the city.
Yeah.
I liked that one.
Yeah, well, that's why Jeff, whenever, whenever I talked to Jeff Morgan, he said, go through it, there's changes, things in here that we want to change, obviously you're not gonna want all the services in there, and then he gave me a copy of the one in Waleska to agree to.
But then it goes on to say, the code may do additional work related to inspection of code violations when requested to do so in writing by the city, so, like that, um, at a minimum, the services provided shall be to administer, inspect for compliance and enforce codes as adopted by the Nelson Merritt City Council as and as amended during the term of this agreement, if such amendments are provided in writing to the county included, but not necessarily limited to property maintenance or alcohol ordinance, they have, there was a lot of these in here, you just have to look at it, what, what we would want tailored to. I mean, we don't, we don't really have an alcohol ordinance, I know Waleska did, but we don't really have that issue.
This is also applies to like quarter situations and public safety, if they have to go into that situation, you want something in place to address it before they have to go in, that would have dealt with it, not only putting that person's life at risk, you're also putting the officer's life at risk, the firefighter's life at risk, the N T's life at risk.
Exactly, we had a trouble with that, there were too much information.
We're trying to keep, um, she, we don't wanna do it openly, because you don't wanna, you can't, you know, you don't wanna get a lawsuit like that, but, but, yeah, we do have the information that she can share. So that's, that's something to think about, um, think about what you'd like it to look like, I'll reach out to respective counties, see if, if what we're proposing, um, is something that they could do, if it is, and you agree to it in October, then we would get Jeff to write something up, he would present it in November, and then we could go forward with an I G A for the first year.
I just really respect it above Ken.
I understand, I'll call.
And have the court.
Yeah, I agree with court here, and I got, I've got, I've gotta call Chris anyway, so I'll, I'll talk with him tomorrow, and then I'll email him as well, and get him to send us some email.
Right, and we got two marshals now, just.
One went to the private sector.
Any other questions about the code enforcement agreement or any other actions that we need to take? Heard David, anybody else need to? All right, security cameras at Kennedy Garden, can't say much on that either.
These are the quotes for cutting camera, well, the first quote is actually to upgrade the radios inside the city, and it would be to upgrade all of the radios, so, because each of the cameras, I guess, are bouncing off garden cameras, they bounce off different, so you only have X amount of radios from the bounce off of, and there is a little bit of lag with them, and it will periodically get worse, just as it's kinda like technology, old cell phones slow down every time, so it needs apparently, so, it is working currently, it just, is it, how many is that? So, the quote to upgrade the radio system as of right now is right under five thousand dollars, it's currently eighteen point four gigahertz, the new, or the quote, it'll be five gigahertz. The next one is quote for the camera where the garden is, and also where the, um, dumpsters go, this one is for one camera, but this is a, the camera that you can zoom and you can move it remotely, so wherever the station, you can log in, whatever, and make it move to different, yeah.
So if we wanted it on the garden until we had dumpsters, we could put it on the garden, then when we have dumpsters, we could.
Yeah, so that quote's for, um, right under six thousand, I asked him to do a couple additional quotes, um, one's for a single five megapixel fixed camera that does not move, that is for five thousand three hundred dollars, to fit two five megapixel fixed cameras is five thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars.
Is the two, is it two, because it would need it to cover that area?
Yeah, I think while we get like where the garden is and while, I guess you can say like where the, the dumpsters are.
But the one camera would take place of both of those?
You could do it whether it's one, or you could do one fixed, two fixed, or one, that you can zoom in and do.
Is that price term, Q K M C, so would they ever come out and install it and everything that needs to happen and add to our existing network that we have here now for that promise?
Yeah, it's between, like, low end for one five megapixel camera was.
Fifty-three hundred difference in that wasn't there for like twenty-two?
He said that the one that you can zoom in, the clarity is much better, like, you can even zoom in like license plates and stuff, but we have to tag rear cameras now, they kinda, we take the house, so anyway, you're gonna get tags, I've done with the case for those, that, um, as far as being able to zoom in, it has a thirty time zoom lens. So it goes from like fifty-three hundred to right like five thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars, and then if you're gonna upgrade the radios, it's four thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars, the quote for this is with the upgraded radio.
So we opted to upgrade the radios and the, there's, are they gonna pass a break on the installs, fifty million dollars on each bill?
I have no.
If he comes out the same day and does everything, it's probably gonna save a lot of that.
I have no clue, I can ask him, but.
So are we needing to upgrade the radios and then that one zooming camera is how we'll do, or?
For right now, I think so, the, um, but it's kinda like all this stuff keeps going up, like, there was a seven hundred dollar increase just in equipment cost from when he came out, just in the lot, the, the time that it, the last quote, the, the price of stuff is just keeps increasing.
So the radio base, sorry, is on whatever quote.
Yeah, well, this, the radio for the camera in the garden is included in this, this price, the other eight radios are for the cameras that are currently installed.
So now the cameras are working, huh?
Yeah, they are.
Yes, it's lining up at the, the court, the half basketball court, it works, but it's still like, cause the radio signal isn't great, it kinda hurts us a little bit, it's on, but it flashes in and out.
So that eight cameras run out, radio?
Now, we have seventeen cameras, there's, they share radio signals.
So if they share, why would we need two radios for the two fixed that are on the same?
So the cameras, radios are different.
It says two radios, I thought this one was for, one fixed, uh, this, yeah, this one, one fixed.
Two fixed cameras.
This one's for one fixed camera and two radios, the, it says one fixed at the bottom, there's probably some.
It was part of. Yeah, cause the other ones all have two too.
I was saying, if eight covers the seventeen cameras we've got out there.
I think some of the other ones bounce off of that one too, so, I don't know, he explained to me how it worked, but, might as well be speaking Chinese, cause I'm not the person to explain technology to, and then try to read one of someone else.
So the first quote in here would upgrade our current system as it sits.
It, yeah, so upgrade the radio signal, cause the, the new system's in, and it's in place, it's got, you can go see the, the stuff in the.
And these eight radios will cover all of those devices.
Yes, and make them clear and.
So then if we.
Clear constant stream, but it's not.
He's gonna guarantee this.
Yeah.
It has, everything has a warranty on that.
Chris need to check his numbers, cause he's got, yeah, there's two radios on.
I'll ask him.
And then information on, do all the install at one time, the installation fee, I don't think.
So I, I think the question that they would have though is what is needed, is, so if you did an upgrade, is it the one camera that zooms, or is it the two fixed, or do you need all of these?
It's just preference.
Okay.
I asked him, he originally just sent me the one estimate for the, the one that's named, and it's all just giving me an option for.
You have to know, to do, to do everything, I don't see the sense in buying too.
And that's why I asked for the additional ones, cause I didn't know if y'all wanted the one that's.
The only difference would be is if you got it, if you have.
If you're playing back and recording, you can't.
You can't see.
You can't move it around, I mean, it's only gonna, you're only gonna see wherever it was at when I recorded it.
Yeah, and then if you've got it on the garden, and something happens in the other area that's not covered, it, you're, you would only be moving it if you're sitting there looking at something.
Wouldn't it depend on where you put it up, if you put it, if you put it facing, then it's gonna.
Correct, but if it's shooting that podium right now, but we've got something that happens over there, one camera's only gonna cover so much.
It also has the ability to zoom way out too.
The movement, yeah, that would be a thing, how much would it cover zoomed out, you really need the zoom feature then, oh, if you have a camera pointing there, you're covering ninety degrees this way, you put two cameras up at less cost, that covers the whole one eighty, but what matters, they move them, I mean, that's just the, the difference in it, so is the zoom and the movement.
So somebody's gotta physically move the camera to it.
Yeah, you got two cameras that cover more area all the time.
You dial in, you dial. It's a remote, it's a remote movable, you got dial into it, you can say that.
Like, if you got the dumpsters up there and you wanna coax them, then you lose your coverage everywhere else, but if you have a camera that covers everything, all, or two cameras that cover everything all the time. Is the zoom feature.
Yeah.
Necessary to do for it.
So. I think you're right about our personal, I think about all the two cameras.
You need to. More coverage constantly as opposed to less coverage.
You may move it just set up here today, and then they're up here doing something.
But you may pull the dumpsters out, move it back to the camera, and then decide to store something up there, at that point, you're losing coverage.
So an upgrade plus two, plus two fixed cameras, is that what we're looking at?
And then double check the numbers for the estimates, how tight those are, and it looks like, and if you can do everything at one time, we'll get a break on the installs.
The radios are never gonna be a difficult installation, just from the amount of time it took him moving certain route the other day, so all I ask, I just don't know.
So he can come back with a total price for that stuff.
Total together, good, I realize, I mean, it's an option of doing one or the other, but asking if we do both, and he does it all at the same time, and I'm sure he may be, if a boom's in there, well, he's probably bringing a boom to bring up here, or save money there.
So we can get a price on upgrading two fixed cameras.
Do you wanna prove it and then, I mean, go back and ask him, or do you wanna put it on the agenda for the next month, cause I know it took us like nine months to get on this.
Your price before a person.
I know, but I'm just saying, cause it took so long to get on the schedule to get this stuff done, and I know, cause he's working here.
You can find that out.
That's what I'm saying, do you wanna give me a budget that is limited to X amount, with the condition that we do ask about if we get a discount or having everything done at once, or duh, 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 so that we don't have to have another meeting to come back in and do this again.
So five and six is eleven, and we can see if we can, he, he can come down on the, uh, installation price if we do the install for the, for the, um, upgrade and, and for the two fixed. Two fixed cameras, yeah, that's just double, that's fifty-seven, so, and that one's six.
That's a problem with an estimate, it doesn't work out with costs, so.
Yeah, you won't, we asked him before about that, but it's just, it had to do with competition, so if he's putting all his prices out for each item, they just don't ever break down each item. Yeah, you want, we asked him before about that, but it's just, it had to do with competition. So if he's putting all his prices out for each item, they just don't ever break down each item.
Yeah, it just makes me hard, hard for me to think about it, though. Like I said, when he's saying, well, I need two radios in this estimate, but there's only one camera there. And then it's quantities, he has two radios for every, every job, two of his estimates only have one camera, need two. But I don't know if he added that twice, or which, which ends the, which ends the typo. The total down here of the quantity. So working out with the two cameras.
Roughly ten seven. It's a lot, we're gonna have to. And we can try to get a break on the, we can try to get a break on the, the install.
Will anybody have them installed if we approve it?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. He said he possibly could get back out next week, but I don't, I don't wanna say that for sure, just cause I don't know exactly what his schedule is.
He's really hard to get hold of and get out here. He, he stays out.
I know, but you want.
I know he's doing City of Milton, they're, they're all of, Alfreda, I mean, he's, he's, I know he's busy, but he's. First on his mind. We can get that, so we can. And make sure the price, the price that we, that we hold, these prices we hold until he gets out.
I have another question, too, cause if one radio will service more than one camera, if we only need eight radios to service seventeen cameras, do we need two radios to service two cameras?
Maybe pass his phone number. He said the new radio should be about eight times as fast, so there won't be any lag issues.
Was it on yours for our grid units? He can just trade them out.
I don't think they have any, it's a problem.
Let's keep like five.
What is, what's part of the cost increase, too, had to do with the federal regulations, when they passed that some of the old cameras couldn't be used, or you couldn't get federal grants, which is why some of the costs had skyrocketed. So there was in, I don't know, there was a bunch of weird stuff that passed federally that caused problems.
Then box all that old stuff up right over here, we'll send it to the option to.
We can try.
Just gotta have some value.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Instead of just trash.
And you wanna say, hey, hey, it's a Williams, you gotta be more.
There you go.
Nelson, you're on my four cycle.
So.
This is the camera that spotted the box.
It was right at the ten second house, and then you go from roughly six and roughly five, it's running, it's running for eleven.
So can we do eleven thousand and try to get our discounts? And get him to get back.
And I don't mind if one of y'all wanna talk to him either, just cause it's not my field of expertise, obviously.
My calling either.
And he's a really nice guy. When he comes out, he's very easy to get along with.
They're gonna get five G in here, one way or another, and he's fighting it the whole way.
And then he gets you a tinfoil hat.
I'm gonna go and get one. I did not love it. I did not love it. I installed it, I didn't love it, dang it. But every, all the frequencies and stuff, you don't have to have it, it's just the way it is.
Still working out, so.
Those radios real, cause they're off of each other, off, then coming out.
That's all the.
But that's, that's all that's gonna work.
Well, if that's one of our cell phones, I'm worried.
They're missing where you, because they want you to upgrade your cell phone to five G, too. That's fact.
I miss five G.
Well, I've given it to.
There's not, there's not any cell phone towers.
I don't have. I'll tell you what. So, can I get a motion to approve a budget of eleven thousand for Centec for the radio upgrade and two fixed cameras? Don't read it.
Do what?
Can I get a motion to approve eleven thousand for the upgrade and two fixed cameras? James, you have a second?
Second, not to exceed.
David, not to exceed.
It should come under that.
Agreed. All in favor? William, would you raise your hand? You did not, you don't want to create eleven thousand? I mean, that's just a cam, that's not what we're gonna try to.
I'd say, I don't like the way it's pictured now. I mean, it's priced, it's done. I can't tell what he's charging for all these numbers, so it's wrong on the pages. So they've got an explanation that we only need eight radios to service seventeen, I was like, probably sixteen or about cameras.
He told me which cameras go, like how they bounce, that I do not remember. It could just like there's a specific order, it's like the ones in the box that'll go.
Well, wait, wait till, come back for something, satisfied.
I'm all right with the number, the numbers on the papers, G H O, but again, if I can buy eight radios to service the entire city, why do I need two radios on one pole for two cameras that are mounted side by side?
I'll have you an answer. I'll, I'll get a call.
Well, all of those had it. All of the quotes had two radios on them. The one that, if it was one camera.
That's what I'm saying, so you got two radios on quotes and one camera.
I don't know if it was a typo, or if it was.
That's a note of three to one, right? So it still passes, what?
Okay, there you go. I feel like, I'm just, so, back to you, so radios, why two radios for the camera for each camera?
Yeah, if you don't have to have a radio for every camera for doing the upgrade, and there may be different reasons, ranges and stuff, but I can't fathom why you would need two radios on the same pole for two cameras that are side by side. If one radio will service multiple cameras over the distance.
Okay.
And is, is, is it gonna come back and say, well, no, I, well, actually, I typed that wrong. There really is only one radio for that.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask.
Where do I compare? Is the price in the bottom corner down there for one radio or two? Cause the quantity says two.
Remind me at the meeting, I'll give you his number. I mean, just so that, I mean, I've texted him what stuff he, and he usually responds really quick, so. On the, the quote on the end, the last quote, so it says two, I'll go to the estimates.
Oh, okay. So we also wanna know if, um, if install, so install dollars.
Yeah, if he can make one trip and do everything, I wouldn't wanna pay him fifteen hundred dollars to work on that pole, and then fifteen hundred dollars to work all throughout the city. That doesn't seem to make sense either.
All right, so I got some of that. I'll call him tomorrow. I'll get an email address. I'll also email him, if I don't get a hold of him, and then I'll ask him to respond to that email that can be forwarded.
Yeah, that's cool. There may be obvious answers to all of it.
And there probably is, but, but, but.
Just doesn't seem like he does a very good job of his estimates.
Well, he originally sent me one estimate, and then I passed him this in different estimates, so we could have been just hurriedly trying to get stuff to me.
More than likely what it is, I don't honestly think it is.
He'd give you after he comes extra stuff.
Probably trying to be deceptive, but the number of radios does make me question why they do the whole city there, that two, two cameras side by side.
The upgrade, and that's what I understand, we have, it should be, it looks to me that it should be two cameras for one radio, because it's five G, which I have two radios, and then I have three antennas on, on something, all five G. So that means you've got three antennas per, so it, that, it makes sense that you have one radio, two cameras, two radios. So I, I want to get, I have to find out.
I was trying to catch up.
Sometimes I overthink things.
No, no, I, I completely get it, cause like I said, the, our, what we're installing right now for five G, you've got, you've got three telescope antennas, but you've got six radios. You just do red, and that's two per antenna, activate again, so I don't, I don't know how he's doing that, but I'll ask him, and I, I, I pretty much have figured that out. And I'll get him to send an email, and I'll send it to you, and anybody that wants it, I'll send it to, but. Let him respond back. So can I make a motion to the jury? David, can I get a second?
I'll search him.
Wait. All in, all in favor? All in favor? Thank you.